Good evening. I'd like to open the Auburn zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, September 17th, 2015 meeting. Have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. So this evening, we have two applicants, a 7 o'clock applicant and a 7:15 applicant, that have notified the board of their request to continue to a future meeting. So our next applicant is scheduled for 7:30. Christopher Lozowski requesting a special permit. I'm going to request and entertain a motion to take a 30-minute, well, until 7:30, so 20-minute, hold this session in recess until the applicant arrives. Any discussion, or do I have a motion?
Motion to recess until 7:30 p.m.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, so we will hold the meeting in recess until the 7:30 applicant arrives. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. What I'd like to do is make a motion, accept a motion to reopen the meeting.
I'll make a motion to reopen the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. So we have reopened the September 17th zoning Board of Appeals meeting, and our 7:30 applicant, Christopher, excuse my pronunciation for this, you can correct me afterwards, Lozowski, requesting special permit under section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the storage of ice control chemicals inside Aquifer Zone 2 for property located at 121 Southridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 12 parcel 143. Is the applicant present? Good evening, sir. If you could approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Chris Lozowski, Iowa 121 Southridge Street, Auburn.
Actually, if I may, we reopened the meeting, but I believe I need a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, so the hearing is now open. So, sir, if you could continue and tell us what you're looking to accomplish.
Sure. I'm seeking a permit to store salt on the property of 121 Southridge Street. The area where I'd like to store is in Zone 2, I'm sorry, Zone 3, I believe, the back left-hand corner, if you're looking at the plot plan, that, and that area is already in, it's not in the watershed district. The majority of my property is, that's why I have to come before you guys and ladies. So I'm just looking to get a permit to store it there. And most of the time, there won't be any salt there during the summer because we don't use it during the summer, so I try to run out, when the winter ends, we try not to carry any salt because it's not financially wise to do that, so that's it.
Anything additional on your application?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to the board for questions. Mr. Cole?
What have you got in place already for containment?
I think there's asphalt underneath, the salt now, and I have concrete blocks, they're six by, they're six feet roughly by 30 inches tall, that contain it now, and I had a shelter over it throughout the winter.
Is the shelter the same as the one pictured here?
No.
The one that's currently there, just a tarp?
The one that's currently there, the top, the top was on the structure, but for this coming winter, I'm going to be upgrading the shelter to something very similar to the
To the one pictured?
Exactly.
You said very similar.
Well, it's going to be a half-round, it's going to be that.
Okay. And there is asphalt under it?
Yes.
Okay, do you, what I'm concerned about is the salt leaching through asphalt. I know certain types of salt don't play very well with either cement or asphalt.
Right.
And because you're in the Aquifer District, that leaches through, it's going to cause a problem.
Well, the salt, we use majority of it, it's magic salt, so it's EPA approved, and again, where I would be storing it, it wouldn't be in the Aquifer District. The back left-hand corner of my property is actually out of the, out of that district, so technically, most of it would be out of that watershed area.
You're going to keep it right in the spot where it is right now?
No, I'm going to move it, actually, to the left.
To the left.
To the, if you're looking at my property, the back left-hand corner, which is out of the Aquifer area.
For the type of salt that you're looking to store, do you need any kind of a special permit?
No.
I mean, or license, I should say.
No.
Where do you buy this salt?
Oh, I get it from, it's Wildwood Reload in Barry, Mass., but they also have, right down the street in Worcester on Southridge Street, where the railroad station is, they have a huge pile of, that's just regular salt, and they leave that, you know, so that's two miles down the road. I realize it's a different city, but, and a lot of time, I used to get it from them, but I just, I switched to a different vendor.
Okay, and when you, if you go out and salt an area, and you have salt left in the truck, you just leave it there?
I spin it back into the pile.
So, out of the sander or spreader that you spread it with, you're able to dump that back in the pile?
Well, you just back up to it and turn the spinner on, and it, it takes a little bit of time, but it just spins it back out, because it's $125 a ton, so you try not to waste it. And if you leave it in the truck, it freezes up, it becomes solid, and then you pretty much jackhammer it out of the truck, so you need to get it out of the truck if you're not using it.
Okay.
That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Mr. Cussing?
Yeah, the area you're going to move this to, you're relocating it, is that a paved area?
It's not, but it will be, it will be.
Planning on paving that?
Because it's conducive to pave it, because if it's, if it's not paved, as you're digging, to get the salt, you're picking up rocks and whatever that happens to be underneath there, so it's, you need to have it, it's going to be paved, so you're not spinning out rocks and hitting cars, because I do a lot of commercial accounts, and it's going to be, the people pay for the magic salt, I can't be giving them loom.
Okay. And this tunnel here that you're showing us, is that, what is that, is that going to be a top, or?
That's a, it's actually a building, it's a
Concrete or something, or?
That's, it's a, it's a building, and it's going to be set on concrete blocks. The concrete blocks will contain it, and the building will be a half-round, as you see on the picture, and the back end of the, the back of the building will be closed off. So it'll be, it'll be only open on one side, and that'll be the front.
And what is that made out of?
It's a, it's a heavy-duty canvas, and the company I'm going to be getting from warranties it for 15 years, and they say it's actually good for up to 25 years. A lot of, a lot of the state uses the same material for their salt storage, a lot of towns use it as well.
You can't really have it any one time, ask them.
How many tons do you have at, at a time there?
I try to get, it's, it all depends, you know, I like to have it like 75 tons, but if it's, like last winter, we went through, I think we went through almost 300 tons, but I'll never have that much there because it's, I don't have room to store it, and it costs a lot of money to have that much there, so. And come the end of the season, it's always a guessing game, if I don't have any salt, you buy salt, and that's what happened to me last year, I bought extra salt, and then it stopped snowing, but with my accounts, I can't afford not to have the salt, because if they need to have it down, then I, you know, I won't be able to supply the job, so.
I don't have any more questions.
And one more thing, we do a lot of parking lots near wetlands, and the magic salt is what is required for use near wetlands, and so that's why we use it, so I know it's good for the, it was, it's environmentally friendly to be, to be on properties near wetlands. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cussing. Ms. Roach?
Just a couple of questions. So you're planning on having this up and running, obviously, for this upcoming winter?
Yes.
Correct? And then, when it's delivered, someone delivers it to you?
Yes.
Or you put, and it gets delivered right to this little spot where you're going to keep it?
Yes.
Stays there, doesn't leave until you load it in your trucks?
Exactly.
Go out and salt, come back, put back whatever is left?
Exactly.
Okay. I don't have anything further.
Thank you. And Ms. Glaze?
Yeah, so you would never use anything other than that magic salt? No other?
No, I mean, I might use a little bit of sand, but other than, that's, the majority of my accounts require magic salt, so that's, that's what I use.
Where do you store the trucks to load it in?
What's that?
Where do you store the trucks to load it in, on the property? How many trucks do you have?
I have five Sanders.
Okay. They're kept on this property?
Yes.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I ask just a couple of additional questions, I'd like to ask our building commissioner if he has any input on this applicant.
I would just ask that 4363 be followed, it just states that any storage of chemicals has to be contained, the loading and unloading area should have some sort of containment, just to keep it from leaching into the ground, and I would recommend a limit on how many tons can be stored on the property, because this is a smaller property.
Do you have a recommendation on the amount of material, on the tonnage?
I would think 100 ton at a time would be a
Under, I'm sorry, I have
Under 100 ton, I think, would be reasonable.
Under 100 ton?
Yeah.
Any additional comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, thank you very much for walking through the board, as asked of the majority, and certainly some of my questions. I just wanted to ask, are you currently storing salt on that lot now?
There is salt there, no, yes.
Okay, so in conjunction with that, how long have you been operating in that business where you've been providing the salt service as well?
In, on that property, or total?
On that property, sir.
Okay, less than a year.
Less than, okay, so essentially, one season, then?
It's one season, exactly.
Okay, so for one-season history. And can you just, the type of salt that you had mentioned, I just didn't catch the name of it?
Magic salt.
Magic?
Yes.
Okay, that's like I heard. I didn't know if there was a more, okay, so it's referred to as magic salt, but that's the one that's recommended based on use near Aquifer and environmentally friendly?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all it is, is a treat for regular salts with a brine to make it less corrosive, less, kills, less damage to vegetation and stuff like that.
So when you purchase it, under the guise of magic salt, it's, it's essentially set at a fee for that type of salt?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm assuming there are, there are less expensive grades of salt that you can purchase?
Yes, yes.
So it costs more money to do that? Very good.
And I don't, I don't ever plan on or try to store more than 100 yard, 100 tons, because it's just simply the cost of it, so we go through it once, storm, if I need to get some more, we get more, and that's how I, you know, I try to run it out again by the end of the winter, I try not to carry it over, because it's, it's no good to be sitting on salt through the summer.
Understood, and I appreciate your explanation around, I mean, it's very much a weather-dependent business to some degree, and you don't want to over-purchase something that you may not need, certainly available for your customers.
Yes.
Any additional comments that you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay. Are there any others present that'd like to speak on this application? Hearing none, seeing none, nothing to add, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have one, a couple more questions.
Sure.
How high, what's the height of that storage building that you have?
The storage building is 10 feet from the ground to the peak of the radius, but I'll be putting it on top of probably three blocks, so the blocks would be sitting about four feet, so the block, it would be 14 feet.
So when you get a delivery?
Yes.
It's going to be coming in, in a truck, deliver it to you?
Yes.
Can that truck back in and dump it there? Or is it dumped outside and you move it in?
No, he dumps it in, if we're being honest, a little bit will come outside, but the majority of it is inside the building, because it's, again, it's, the material is money, and if it gets wet, and the salt just turns hard and it's dumped.
So that truck, you don't move the salt into the building?
I'll just take my, my backhoe and I'll push it in and stack it up inside the building.
But it's already in the building when you push it?
Yes.
Okay, and as you've stated, that whole area outside will be paved?
Yes, yeah, I will move the bin now, it's paved where it is now, when I move it, it'll be paved, I'll make sure I pave it again, and that's where the new salt will go.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. So if there are no other questions from the board, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. So, open for discussion, is there a motion on this applicant?
I'll make a motion to grant a special permit, based on and with the caveats of the building inspector, that those be included.
Ms. Cole, so as a form of condition, I've got it down that sections 4.3.6.3 containment, the containment section would be adhered to, and then a limit, max, max storage of under 100 ton at a given time?
Yes.
As by means of condition?
Yes.
Okay. Not to state your motion, sir, I just, those were the notes that I had had, based on the building commissioner's comment.
I'd like to add, just, I think, building on it a little bit, I would, along with what Caleb said, I would want, whatever part is going to be paved, to be sure that there is enough on each side for spillover, for loading and unloading, you know, a few extra feet all the way around to make sure that nothing is going to be left on anything other than asphalt. That may be clear in this section anyway, but I just want to make sure we're being clear about some extra room around.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. So, then, a further condition, I'm hearing that we would want to add that the containment area where it's stored be completely paved underneath.
Yes.
But did I miss anything?
The buffer.
I didn't want to oversimplify it.
Yeah, no, I think that's
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Going along with Ms. Roach's condition, would we want to stipulate how far beyond it that apron would go? Like three feet, maybe, at least?
Yeah, sure, like, when we see the picture, we see these cinder blocks, I would expect that outside of those cinder blocks, maybe about three feet all around
Three-foot apron?
Would have some, also have some asphalt there.
I don't know how much you plan to pave, but
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what she's saying, it's just, but once the blocks are up, there's, there's no way the salt could get
Right.
From one side of the blocks to the other, so it'd be kind of
Right.
I don't say a waste of pavement, but it would, I could see on the front of it coming out a little bit with an apron, but the sides, there'll never be spillover through the sides, because it's, they won't be able to.
I guess I'm more concerned with the front and back than I am with
Okay.
The sides, if those cinder blocks are sealed with almost a wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, the open area.
I would think, actually, now that I think about it, that we would want a little bit more than three feet in the front.
Yes.
If I may, through the chair, I would recommend a 10-foot around the three sides, the two sides in the front of the building, because the blocks are there, but they're not sealed with mortar or anything, and salt can
They're not sealed with mortar?
No.
Wow.
They're just landscape blocks that are stacked up.
Okay.
I would recommend a 10-foot area around the three sides, the front and the two sides.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Cussing. So, I think I have the conditions outlined. Are there any additional comments from the board? Okay. Do I have a second on the condition, excuse me, on the motion, and I would be happy on the second to walk through the conditions of approval before we take a vote?
My second.
Okay. So hearing a second, before we take a vote, if I may, so the conditions would be on, on this motion to adhere to our sections 4.6 point, excuse me, 4.3.6.3, with regard to containment and leach it, and the second condition, limit to a max storage of 100 tons at any given time, ensure that there is permanent pavement underneath the storage area, and a final condition that speaks to a 10-foot apron beyond the cinder block containment area where there would be storage on all three sides, front.
Could, is there any possibility to maybe amend that 10-foot per side? I'll be willing to put up a berm or something, because the building itself is only 20 feet wide, so we're talking 40 feet of pavement for, it's going to be as wide as the building is, if we put, if I, if I put a berm up on the outside of, on the pavement, on the outside of the cinder blocks, maybe two or three feet out, so if there's any, if there's anything that's going to leak out, it'll hit the berm and then come to the front of the, the front of the building, because with that weather tight roof on it, there won't be any, the salt will not be getting wet, so nothing could possibly leach out.
I don't know what a berm is.
Yeah, I'm somewhat familiar, I believe I know what he's talking about, essentially a, a backing, or a
Just like, just a, on a pavement, just a
A little hill, if you will, a little
Like a speed bump
Yeah, like a
On the sides of the, on the sides of the blocks, if anything does come out, it doesn't go out further, and it comes to the front of it, just to try to save on the, the cost of the pavement.
Appreciate your additional comments around, on just getting to, trying to satisfy the intent of what we're, we're trying to protect here, but then make it logistically feasible. If, I'll certainly take it back to the board and discussion, and if I may suggest that for the fourth condition, rather than a 10-foot, would, would the board be considerate of language in the condition that speaks to a reasonable accommodation, to provide an appropriate skirt around, and, and from, and I'll reach back to inspection services if there's advice that you can provide during, during the construction of this, to make sure that you feel that's an appropriate accommodation, so that we don't limit the applicant to 10 feet, but we're certainly satisfying the condition of any spillage outside of the storage area.
I would think if, if we did a five-foot apron from the inside of the block, the block's going to take up two feet of that apron, it's going to leave you three feet of asphalt on the outside, and we provide a six-inch curb to contain that area, I would accept that as a feasible solution.
So we're back to the three feet?
So, yeah, so I think we're back, yes, so we're back to the three foot?
With a, yeah, with a six-inch containment curb.
Six inch
That makes sense, the curb.
Yep.
Containment curb, and just for my, for my clarity, the containment curb would be on what side?
On the
On the two sides.
On the two sides.
On the two sides, on either left or right side?
Yeah.
Okay. Containment curb.
And what about the front open side? Because that's a side that concerns me.
Right.
Three foot, you have to leave that open.
Rear.
Right, I mean, you can't have a six-inch bump there, but I guess I would
I would suggest that the front entrance just pitch back towards the building?
Oh, good call.
If it keeps anything from running out at the front.
Great idea.
Pitch back. And we, and we discussed in the front that, that we would still maintain a five-foot pavement entry, or a three-foot pavement entry. And I know we're designing this as we speak, but what I'm, what I'm trying to accomplish is to make sure that we have a reasonable accommodation to satisfy our concerns around containment, but aren't looking to overman, over, essentially over-manufacture this for you. You know, spending a lot of money trying to satisfy a condition.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And so, I, I'm, so that's why I think that the discussion is prudent. So in the front
I don't know what the applicant's plan is, but I would think he'd want a larger paved area where he's loading trucks, but I can work with him on site to
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm going to do is leave, and I think we have a fair amount of discussion around, around the conditions, I'm going to ask that, that the fourth condition regarding the sides, the front, and how that's constructed, I'm going to ask that you would work for, toward an approved accommodation with inspectional services, so that on-site you can come to an agreement on what needs to be spent, so that you don't overdo it, and that we're not pressing for something that
Sure.
May not be necessary.
Definitely.
To make sure that it's reasonable.
Okay.
And we have, we have the goal, you know, respectfully, of, of making sure that it's contained appropriately, and that you're able to work it appropriately, but that we're not over-engineering this, and
Right.
Faking a design, my concern now is that we're forcing a design towards you that it may or may not solve everything.
And it's in my best interest to not let any of it leach out either, because it's, it's money, to me, it's, it costs me a lot of money, so if it gets wet, I lose material, then I'm losing money, so
I appreciate your comments, and I, for one, am very comfortable with you working with inspectional services to reach that accommodation. So, with that, and I think we've over-described some of the conditions, so I will just move to a vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, so voted. So congratulations, that is approved, with the conditions that we've outlined.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Thank you. We've, we've already closed that hearing, we've brought it into a vote, substantial discussion around conditions, but Caleb, thank you very much for working with him closely to make sure that last accommodation is, is appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish. Okay, so as, as said at the beginning of the meeting, the first two applicants had chose to continue, and our 7:30 applicant has been completed on a hearing, we have some administrative pieces, statements, and discussions at the end of the meeting, there is a Plan 745 applicant, Eagle Properties Management, so I'd like to take into discussion with the board an opportunity to, amongst ourselves, open for discussion just among board members, but not opening the hearing, I'd like to open for discussion this, this application. So if I may, I'd like to request a motion to open for discussion by 745 applicant.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. So, I understand that we have before us, and Caleb may be able to speak to this, our building commissioner, but we have essentially an appeal to a decision from, in this property located 196 Leicester Street, violation of Town of Auburn zoning bylaws, and there is a request for an appeal based on inspectional services and their notice sent to the applicant. So my understanding is that this board, not the individual members of this board currently seated, but this board had heard a hearing for this property, that hearing had opened at some point in time, I don't know the timeframe of that hearing, but I understand that hearing resulted in a denial, and so for that reason, that applicant would not have the opportunity to be reheard at the zoning board of appeals for a minimum of two years with the refiling, so I'd like to now open to have our building commissioner speak on this issue, as far as his background on what the applicant is looking to do to open a hearing and discuss an appeal.
Thank you. The situation came before the board some time ago, the denial was issued by the board, the applicant then appealed to the courts, that decision was rendered by the court against the applicant, town council advised me to move forward with an enforcement, I've done so, and the applicant is now trying to appeal my decision or my enforcement based on the court's decision before you, and I don't feel that your board has the authority to, to hear an appeal on this.
We don't.
I believe town council is in agreement.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any additional comments?
No.
You can open it up for the board members to share any opinions or thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, being that this was denied, and being that the appeal was taken to land court, at which time the petitioner was denied, and the enforcement, which is the right of the Town of Auburn to take, has been instituted, I fail to see the procedural grounds that the applicant, applicant can appeal any, anything on. The appeal has, has gone, our decision was rendered, it was appealed, the decision of the land court was rendered. the land court was rendered, and now the, the right of the town to amend, uh, by code enforcement, the, the situation, I don't, I fail to see where that is appealable.
Thank you, Mr. Cola. Any, any additional comments?
Not at this time.
Any, any additional board member comments?
No.
I would agree with Mr. Cola.
All right. Okay, um, I, I would agree with what's been said, I don't believe that the zoning board of appeals has, um, either jurisdiction or responsibility or authority to hear such an appeal, um, that was originally denied, and then re-challenged in land court, um, and then rendering an opinion therein. So at this point in time, um, I would ask that the board, uh, make a motion, or, or, excuse me, I will entertain a motion, uh, that for discussion, we close this hearing and not entertain an appeal hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the discussion and not entertain the appeal hearing.
Do I have a second?
No, it's okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, um-
Mr. Cola.
All right, I cast my vote. I'm wondering, um, because we have a, a great audience here, people, I'm assuming, people much interested in this particular, um, case. Would it be proper for us to, um, not the petitioner, but hear some of the opinions that are out there? Would it be proper? That is a question.
Uh, I, I, I'm smiling because I, I, I absolutely appreciate what you're asking, and I'm, um, as I'm walking through this, um, my recommendation, um, as, as chairman tonight, is that I would, um, continue with the vote, have the board take a vote on, on essentially denying opening a hearing. And then once that business is concluded, I am also sensitive to the fact that we have many residents here, um, that, um, I'm assuming they're, they're not here just to say hello, and, um, and they may wish to render an opinion, I want to be sensitive to that. And so I, I will, I will certainly entertain that if it's, uh, an overwhelming majority and the feeling of the board, if, if we wish the citizens to be heard on this matter, that after taking a vote, um, I do believe that we should be taking a vote not to, not to conduct this hearing. Um, and I'm, I'm not slaying anyone's opinion, but that, that is my belief. After the, after the vote, um, I can't, um, in moral conscience answer whether or not it's appropriate, uh, but I can tell you that I do have a desire to allow people to be heard, uh, that are in front of us this evening. That would be my recommendation.
I would agree, I, I would definitely agree with that, and therefore cast my vote to not hold a hearing.
So, I, I, in the affirmative, I have, uh, that, um, it, it has been motioned and seconded not to conduct a hearing for the 745 applicant, um, and are there any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, we have so voted that we will not entertain opening a motion on this application. And then what I'd like to do now is, as we've discussed, is, is entertain, uh, well, let me, let me ask this of the board, would there be any board members that, um, or, or any opinions that would have a challenge with us hearing the public on this item?
Yes.
Through the chair, I could possibly just make a statement to let the abutters know where the town stands on the situation-
Okay.
Rather than have them speak.
My issue is just that I, I appreciate everyone being here, and I think everyone should have the right to say what they wanted, however, I think it puts us in a very tough position, I'm not comfortable answering any questions without town council, and I just think it's gonna end up being a runaround for questions that we cannot answer. I don't mean to say that we don't value your opinions and your, but we are not in a position to really speak about this issue at all, as far as I'm concerned, so I'm afraid of what, I think maybe a statement should let them know where we are in this process, but I'm just afraid to open a can of worms that we can't answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roach, and I'm hearing a lot of, I'm not hearing, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads.
Yeah, I think that's a, definitely a very valid statement.
I'm just afraid.
Would, would you, you agree with that, Mr. Cola, based on your comments?
Yes, I would.
So having, having a, cast a vote, I'm not hearing any opposition to that, um, so, Mr. Commissioner, if we could have your statement?
Just for all the abutters, I am working with town council to move forward with the enforcement of the court's decision, and if anybody has any questions, you can come up to my office or call me in the office, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moody. Any additional comments or questions on this?
No, thank you.
Motion to close the discussion?
Motion to close.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Okay. So, we have this evening some signatures and decisions. For those that, that have come in, I thank you for your participation, um, and, uh, I hope you can understand the position that we were in, and, uh, and, and wanting to do the right thing. Good evening. Okay, I think that for, uh, discussion, we have signatures and decisions, we have four.
Accept.
Yeah, Sheila only provided one for me, so-
Sheila provided one?
I don't know, I don't know if they haven't been finished, or, I know Bob was in the office the other day, I didn't get to speak to him, so I don't know if he didn't finish the other ones, or-
Okay. I'm, I was catching up on, um, on some email, quite frankly, um, after some, uh, some business travel, and, uh, I, I saw our message come forward based on a, a 60-day timeframe, um, and, and I may very well be playing a part in having to write some of those decisions. I, I need to circle back with Sheila, so I'll do that tomorrow morning, so I, on, on those other decisions, and, and hopefully we haven't timed out there.
I don't think so.
Okay, so we just have one decision that-
Yeah.
It's on time.
Yeah.
It's on time.
Yeah, and I believe that was on-
And we've already taken care of it.
Yeah, you were on the-
That's as efficient as we are, okay. Um, I don't think there's any other business before the board this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, so we are adjourned, thank you very much.